We eat up too early, and so today is too late. So, we're gonna get started. We'll start off with prayer from Councilwoman Wiggins, and we will have Councilman Oystad to lead us in the pledge.
Please throw me a prayer if you would like to. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this day. I thank you for bringing us together today. I ask for your wisdom in this room. I ask for your love. I ask for your peace and your guidance, Father, for this city, for this county, for this state, for this country. Lord, that you would just guide us in the direction you would want us to go. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have all members present.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the City Council meeting. Councilmembers, please silence your phones as well as your tablets. Audience, we ask that you silence your phone, too. I can't make you, but I'm asking that you silence your phones, okay? Keep in mind, this is a meeting that is being televised, and we ask for everybody to be on their best behavior. No rude, obnoxious behavior, no bullying, no hissing and all of that. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we don't have any announcements this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings.
The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for the council to hear the comments from the speaker regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or non-support of the topic of the public hearing. The first speaker or the designated speaker has 10 minutes. Any speaker that comes behind the designated speaker has three minutes. This is not a question-to-answer period. Council will not be answering you. So, once you say what it is, that's it. So, don't expect for us to give you an answer because we're not answering. Not that we don't want to. It's just the process that we have to go through. Madam Clerk.
Our first public hearing is regarding authorizing the supplemental issuance of Water Supply System Junior Lean Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, and authorizing the publication of a notice to authorize the supplemental issuance of Water Supply System Junior Lean Revenue Bonds, Series 2025.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this subject?
If I'd like to, and I will. So, what these revenue bonds are, hi, I'm Mike Green here. I'm the Director for Water and Waste Water Treatment for Saginaw. And what these bonds are for is two major projects. One is lead service line replacements along with the replacement of a water line on Wy Street. The authorization is for 18.8. This is going to come in significantly lower than that, probably up towards $9 million. We're just getting our numbers back from state on this, but this authorizes up to, is how this works, so that's what it is.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? Last and final time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So, move. Support.
It's been moved in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second public hearing is regarding authorizing the issuance of Sewage Disposal Junior Lean Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, and authorizing publication of a notice to authorize the issuance of Sewage Disposal Junior Lean Revenue Bonds, Series 2025.
Yes, sir.
So, as described by the clerk, this one will go the other way backwards. So, this bond is for up to 18.28 million dollars. The project will be over that. We'll use system funds to fund the rest of that project. And that is for two major repairs out at our wastewater plant. That's the big valves at the front end of the plant and some significant concrete repair in our clarifiers. The other one will be to do some, to add UV treatment in lieu of chemical treatment, which should help with costs because we've been struggling with costs on chlorine and just to modernize the system. The current chlorine system is at its useful life and is time to be replaced. The one thing I should add about both of these resolutions is they support our FY25 SRF grant, and there is significant forgiveness in both of these bondings.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? Last and final time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this topic? I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So, move.
It's been moved in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk. Speakers will remain courteous and respectful when approaching the podium and as well to the audience. The clerk will call you up to the podium. You have three minutes. I'm asking that everybody gets their message in within those three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Melanie Velasco.
Hello, council. Hello, everybody. My concern is people's properties and the bushes and the trees that hang over the sidewalks, and also now I've seen cars and trucks that are blocking sidewalks, which is against the law, and it is a ticket. And I'm also going to address the trees that block over sitting lighting, and that makes it very dangerous for everyone. Still, again, the abandoned houses that need to be demolished and the owners need to be being responsible to board them up. The other highly concerned issue I have is speed limit on residential areas. Our children are at play. Well, I don't have any grandchildren yet, but maybe one day. Anyway, children are at play, and the speed limit needs to be posted, and people need to be ticketed. They're going way too fast. Second issue, again, is those cable boxes spilling all over the place, looking like I can't even know what. I want to say an octopus, but more like a bunch of snakes coming out of a thing. There's no more landlines basically anymore. Everybody wants to go south, so let's get them out of there or wrap them up or do whatever. Other is concerned is my own personal highly emotional drain that has happened to me last summer. From Old Town, they called me a solicitor, which highly hurts me, which I had to call the police on them. And I'm not allowed to go to Old Town, which I have never solicited anything. Nothing, nothing. Then the other concern is the junction. That owner kicked me out. You see this big old ring on my finger? I was there, and I was there previously before he kicked me out with a cup, with my friend, and I spent over $35 on lunch. Then at karaoke night, I'm sitting way to the side, and I had been sitting there waiting for karaoke, and the owner obviously sees things all crazy because, well, I guess he doesn't like me. But anyway, these other gentlemen come in, and they want my seat, which I've been parked there for a while, reading, writing, waiting for karaoke. He says, "I touched those guys." No, I did not. So, now I can't go to the junction. Well, guess what? I don't give a crap. I won't go to your establishment. If you want to think that way about me, go right ahead. When you see me one day under the stars and the lights and all the whatever, maybe up there on City Council, you'll think twice about downing this girl because this girl ain't no prostitute. All right. The other one is trees again, and then also this. Radiaid buildings, they could be used for like water shelters to give people that are homeless water a place to sit, relax, and rest in the evening time. In the daytime, they could be a place for children to play. Let's get this city cleaned up, so we're proud to say we're from Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Audra Davis.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm Audra Davis, the President and CEO for the United Way of Saginaw County, and we proudly serve as the Housing Assessment and Resource Agency for Saginaw County, otherwise known as the HARA. The proposed Commission on Homelessness, while well-intended, raises concerns about potential misalignment with federally mandated systems already in operation. As the HARA, we hold tight oversight, fiduciary, and collaborative responsibility in coordinating Saginaw County's homelessness response. We also directly provide case management, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and shelter diversion programs serving those who are unsheltered or at immediate risk of becoming unhoused. These efforts are coordinated through the Homeless Management Information System, or otherwise known as the HMIS Administrative Assistance Program, where we track outcomes aligned with HUD and MISTA mandates and report on system-wide progress in collaborative partnership with the local shelters in our area. The Commission, as currently stated, does not formally integrate with this infrastructure. Without that connection, it risks making recommendations that may inadvertently conflict with compliance standards or distract from coordinated strategies already underway, such as internal departments working in the city and the Community Development Services Department, which implements community block grants, many of which support the work of established homeless assistance providers and shelters or others. Rather than create a parallel advisory body, we respectfully encourage the city to reconsider working with our already established, long-running collaborative. Consider this. This approach would ensure technical alignment, strategic consistency, and most importantly, build upon not duplicate the progress already being made. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to addressing homelessness in our community.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher Brown, Senior.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem, and also the council members and everyone else that's present. My name is Chris Brown. I serve as the Executive Director over there at the Well of Saginaw Homeless Shelter for Men, where we work directly with the male residents of Saginaw who are experiencing homelessness. Our organization is an active member of the Saginaw Consortium of Homeless Assistance Providers, CCHAP. We meet regularly with other providers to coordinate care, align services, and reduce housing instability. We know firsthand how collaboration improves outcomes of our community. That's why we have concerns about the proposed Commission on Homelessness as currently structured. It appears to duplicate efforts already underway through CCHAP and our Community Housing Assessment and Resource Agency, known as HARA, efforts that are fairly aligned, locally responsible, and already producing results. Rather than forming a new structure, we asked the city to support and invest in what already working, what is already working. We welcome the opportunity to partner and would encourage the potential creation of a formal liaison seat for a City Council member at CCHAP. This would allow us to provide insight and the voice of direct service providers, a city leadership perspective to the table, and to ensure alignment with existing systems. Please ensure that any new effort complements, not repeats, with our shared goal of ending homelessness in Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jasmine Calhoun.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem, and council members and all of us present. My name is Jasmine Calhoun, and I serve as the President and CEO of the Saginaw County Youth Protection Council, which is the only youth shelter in Saginaw, Midland, Toscana, and Grashit Counties. I will speak tonight as a Board Member of the Saginaw Consortium of Homeless Assistance Providers, or CCHAP. We value the city's intention to elevate solutions for homelessness and understand the desire to engage more voices. However, as currently structured, the proposed commission may unintentionally create parallel system, bringing together many of the same stakeholders, folks already collaborating while risking uncoordinated policy recommendations, fragmented planning, and competition for limited funding. The city's Community Development Department already oversees HUD mandated plans. CCHAP leads strategic coordination across service providers, funders, and systems. If a commission is to be established, it should work and serve as a bridge to that work and not as a barrier. We're not here to resist change. We're here to partner. We would like to welcome a formal opportunity to engage more deeply, perhaps through a designated CCHAP seat for a City Board or Commission member. That approach would ensure alignment with existing mandates and build on the infrastructure that's already producing results. Let's work together to enhance, not to duplicate, the efforts underway and end homelessness in Saginaw. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bishop Chet Atkins.
Well, good evening. Good evening. Well, I didn't come with nothing written because I come from experience. I come from experience because I was once homeless. For two and a half years, I lived in an abandoned house on South Park and Gage, and after they knocked that house down, I jumped the fence on Holland and slept in the junkyard. But by the grace of God, I had to tell myself that, I had to look in the mirror at myself and tell myself that if anything's going to change, it's got to change with me. And so, I took it up on myself, not to wait on anyone, but to do what I needed to do to change. And so, with that change, I was fortunate enough to be the man that I am now because I found mentors and people that believed in me, that pushed me and inspired me and gave me a sense of dignity. And that's what I give homeless people today. There's three or four guys I took from under the bridge just last year. Today, they have full-time jobs, own apartments. I take in every winter, every winter, 45 to 50 homeless people inside of my church. I have a 45,000 square feet church on Roosevelt, Austin, and Federal. I was fortunate FEMA called me and gave me 100 cots. So, I got 3,000 square feet of space down the basement that I'm hoping that if I get the finance and the help and collaboration to help support this, I'll be able to take more people off the street because at the end of the day, even though they homeless, they still people. And so, what inspired me to always push to bring about self-awareness to these people is to realize that if you can show them something different, you know? That's why I built a barber shop in my church, where they can come get their haircut, and they get a haircut and feel like somebody. You know, that is the thing. A lot of times, people get caught and trapped in a system, and they lose their way. And it's not that they want to be homeless, but some just lose their way. And sometimes, we have to use wisdom and guidance to try to pull people from out of that clutch of thinking that no one cares, nobody loves them, nobody wants to help them. And so, I've had, you know, I've been wanting to quit several times. But when I see the progress and see the effort that many of them want to change and want to make a difference, like this Sunday, this Saturday, I got a cleanup with maybe 25 homeless guys, and we're going to go clean up the neighborhood. I took a park. I took an empty lot.
Let's wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Charles Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. My name is Charles Lawrence. I am the President of Putting Others Before Ourselves. And what I'm here to do today, to do, is to ask that, I hear a lot of different things that sound like, you know, there's oppositions to moving forward or making any type of changes, but I do think that there needs to be some consideration of change because even though we have a lot of great people doing a lot of great things, I know that for myself and my efforts, along with Councilman Carley, along with Chet Atkins, we have gone out into communities, into the Saginaw community, just at will, and we've found that there are still unserviced homeless in our community. There are still people under bridges. There are still people who are hungry every day. There are people that are going without showers and that type of thing. And I think that what we can accomplish today, if everybody was willing to work together, would be a change that would include everybody and bring about a collaborative effort that can be, that could extend further than whatever efforts are in place already. It's not accomplishing everything that we need to see in our community. To see somebody under a bridge, to see somebody homeless, to see somebody bedbug, you know, bedbug bites all over their arms, you know, it breaks my heart. I am, I did come from a broken home. I know what it is. I know what it's like to be hungry. I know what it's like to go without. And it makes our, it makes our commitment to getting out in the community, to try to do better things for the community, more serious and something that we are definitely grounded in. We would love the opportunity for everybody in the community to get to know us as a 501(c)(3) that's committed to this. The homeless is a very serious issue that we talk about in our meetings all the time. And again, we're putting others before ourselves. We're called POBO, and we would love for anybody from the City Council to any of the people here that are invested in seeing about our homeless to reach out to us. But I definitely, I definitely support the idea of a more collaborative effort and some ideas of moving some things around to create a change that involves everybody because the more, you get a better result in numbers, and I know that we can make a bigger impact. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ken Horn.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem and Distinguished City Council. I'm Ken Horn. I'm with the Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance, and I manage the growth strategy for our four-county region. And I'm here to express support for item number two on your agenda, the approval of the development contract with the Medical Diamond. I also co-chair, along with my partner, Tom Miller of Saginaw Future, the Medical Diamond Steering Committee. The Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance acts as the fiduciary for the steering committee, and so, we have an expressed interest in making sure that, you know, that developmental stakeholders are aware of everything that's going on with Medical Diamond and things, and that the city is aware of things that are going on with the Medical Diamond. And I'm here also to express my gratitude, Madam Mayor, to you and your City Council for all of the support for the Medical Diamond over the recent years, and, you know, and especially your City Manager, Tim Morales, and Phil Carwatt and Cassie, who are part of our steering committee, and the work that you do on behalf of the people of the city of Saginaw to, you know, to further this venture are extraordinary. But I want to make sure that that keeps, you know, that the momentum keeps going. And I've been around long enough now, Madam Mayor, that I remember the early days where the Medical Diamond was just a seed of an idea, and it came from a friend, a dear friend of mine, Dr. Sam Shaheen. And when he would meet with people like Veronica Horn, Joanne Carrery, Tom Miller, Senior, others, to talk about, you know, the potential for the city of Saginaw. And if you remember, you know, and you'll hear more about the details of the agreement and, you know, the benefits of it, but you'll remember that a City Council, much like this one, decades ago, you know, the City Council discussed an agreement for the MCBI building. That kind of kicked everything off. And, you know, the success of that and the number of people that are hired and, you know, and it's just reaped rewards for the city of Saginaw. And so, this is, you know, this to me is much in the same vein. So, I'm here to, you know, just to, you know, again, express support. But in my role as steering committee co-chair, if there's any time that you want to talk about the Medical Diamond, feel free to, you know, to contact me. I will meet you for coffee in town here, and we can talk more about the Medical Diamond itself. But again, I'm expressing support for item number two on your agenda.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pastor Chris Pryor.
Get it over there. I'm still breathing hard just so that I can make it in. But good afternoon to each of you, or good evening to our mayor, to the distinguished City Council members. My name is Pastor Chris Pryor. I serve as the pastor of Victorious Believers Ministries. I serve on the Saginaw Chamber Board, Saginaw Community Foundation, but that's not important. I love the city of Saginaw. I'm a native of Flint, but I love the city of Saginaw. I've been over here, been here for probably 35-plus years. I want to commend you all on the work that you're doing as we continue to remain optimistic on our city, some of the great things that are happening and some of the ventures that continue to take place. Extremely excited about that as we continue to unify and work together. I'm here tonight again to just celebrate and hope that we can continue to unite on the purpose of the Medical Diamond. We know how General Motors was, in my day, we called them Generous Motors because they provided so much. They have exited our city. But we know the stake that the Shaheens have played and done a phenomenal job in our city, as well as what this will do for the city of Saginaw. I'm grateful for the Hemlock Semiconductor, the Corning Projects, and all those things that are manifesting in our area. But here we have an opportunity to bring education, to also empower and make sure those who need opportunities and tax dollars for the city of Saginaw to be able to happen. And so, I want to just encourage you all, as I believe you all know, where we're at, the need for something such as this for our children, for our youth, for people who say, you know what? I'm going to move out of town. Now, we give them another safe place and environment for us to grow and partner with education. I'm a two-time graduate of Saginaw Valley State University, grateful of that institution and all the commitment with Central Michigan and all the different teams that will play in regards to Medical Diamonds. So, tonight, I just wanted to come to share that in big support, I shared with you before, being a church off of 75, it was nice for many people to be able to travel near and far to our facility with those being in Midland. Many times, they would come and they would move to work for Dow, and many of those people, or some of those people worship with us at our church. That is not the day that we live in. Many people afforded the opportunity to remain in Houston, remain in Houston and not move. Here's an opportunity where we are able to bring great people to work in our wonderful city, to transform it. My last closing thing is to also say, we know that General Motors, the role that they played for years. I believe that it is important for us to find some way, some initiative, to pull them back, to make sure that they don't allow those dilapidated buildings to remain in the state that they are in, and to make sure the schools that we sponsor, Jesse Loomis, I go to it every Tuesday morning, some Thursdays, to make a difference so those children don't see that building still sitting there with the state of our facility. I support the Medical Diamond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Pete Shaheen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the city staff, and of the audience. I want to say it's an honor for me to be here today.
It's not you. It's your behalf. That's another bell.
It's an honor for me to be here in front of you today. Representing... It's an honor for me to be here in front of you today, um, representing the Shaheen family, Shaheen Development, and the many collaborating stakeholders who have a shared grand vision for this downtown city of Saginaw. Tonight, I ask for your approval for the development agreement before you for us to acquire six parcels on Washington Avenue between Hoyt and Thompson. Your approval tonight will result in a thirty-five million dollar mixed-use development, including healthcare, residential, restaurants, and retail. This development will contribute to improved healthcare for our underserved community, add much-needed housing, activate our water fronts with restaurants and retail, and foster great collaboration between many healthcare and educational institutions. This approval, your approval tonight, is step one in the Medical Diamond Initiative. And our request tonight is separate from the CMU School of Medicine. This project that we're describing tonight is a culmination of a twenty-five-year vision in the making, as Dr., as Ken Horn alluded. It will bring millions in investment and hundreds of jobs to transform our Dowtown. You might ask yourselves, and people in the audience might say, why should you trust Shaheen Development to deliver on this thirty-five million dollar project for the citizens of Saginaw? Let me tell you why. We have a proven track record. We have a bond with the citizens of Saginaw and the City Council and the staff that goes back over thirty years. Our first development took four-block stretch of Washington Avenue, blighted abandoned manufacturing, uh, structures, and created the Michigan Cardiovascular Institute Headquarters, home to Michigan Cardiovascular Institute, Tri-City Urology, Garber Management, Huntington Bank, hundreds of jobs. The next development agreement was transforming the vacant GM Towers to today's Commerce Tower. And along with it, investing millions in the Historic Temple Theater. And most recently is taking a bladed stretch of property along Hamilton and creating the Riverview Brownstones, bringing new residents to the city of Saginaw. Thank you for your trust, thank you for your approval. Together, we will change the skyline of downtown Saginaw. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Councilmember, you have three minutes as well. And tonight, we will begin with Councilwoman Seals.
What a perfect place to begin, Madam Mayor, with the most positive person. It's great to see everyone out tonight. It's good to hear all the great stuff happening in Saginaw. Um, this Thursday, at the school I work at, Francis Ray Academy, we're having our, our annual block party where, um, it is the culmination of our end-of-summer celebration, which is, um, the end of summer school as we know it. Pretty much the kids are happy about summer being over. So, uh, we, I can't remember which year this is, but, uh, it's been going on for, pretty much for a long time. But the community in Saginaw comes out to celebrate with us. Um, Francis Ray is on the corner of Weber and between Owen and Jefferson, Diamond Street from Saginaw Middle School. And, uh, it's from eleven AM to two PM. And so, uh, everyone please come out and have a great time. The community does come out over there in their area, they, we have a great time. You see about five or six hundred people there. Um, and then, don't forget the Friday Night Live, it's Blues Night this Friday. So come out and have a great time, starts at five-thirty PM. And just hearing, um, uh, almost calling Dr. Shaheen, sorry, Mr. P., uh, Mr. Shaheen, and, and just, uh, listening to the things that are just transforming. And I remember being a young girl, listening to the plan and listening to my mom talk about, uh, the Medical Diamond. And just seeing those plans, just seeing this, uh, now coming to pass is really exciting for me. So, um, I'm excited to see Saginaw turning into what I foresaw over twenty years ago as a, I can't say young girl because I'm fifty years old, but, um, just seeing it come to pass is really an awesome thing. So, I'm excited to see the path that Saginaw is taking and that we're getting things done. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ball.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, uh, thank the, uh, citizens for coming out speaking today, about to propose, uh, commission homeless, uh, thing we were talking about. We know we have a problem here in the city of Saginaw with homeless people. But there's something else that we have in the city of Saginaw too, and that's the, uh, alcohol and drug addictions, you know, things that make people homeless. On that note, I'd like to, uh, report that a good friend of mine, Demetrius Bradock, has brought the mansion on the corner of, uh, South Michigan, nine twenty-five South Michigan. And he's gonna turn that into Alcohol and Drug Treatment Center. He'd be able to house over sixty patients in there. And, uh, the City Council is invited to, uh, come out next Wednesday to, uh, take a look at, this Wednesday, at three PM, to come and take a look at the house. Uh, the manager, the city manager and all will come and take a look. And see what this young man who's in recovery, I have twenty-five years of recovery. Uh, I guess I mentioned that I do sponsor him. But it seemed like he's gonna be sponsoring a whole lot of other people in the program for them getting cleaned. And the Shaheen Development people, like Demetrius Bradock, wanna do something for the city of Saginaw. We know what they had already did in Midland and Bay City. And I'm so thankful to see them doing something on the Saginaw River. You know, and it's gonna be a beautiful project, gonna create a lot of jobs, a lot of trade jobs. Uh, my son, uh, is a graduate of, uh, Local eighty-five, I see we have a, a big pipe fitter here. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm real thankful that my son graduated from it. Now he's apprenticing his sons to be pipe fitters. And I'm so grateful about that too. But the thing is, we're gonna be bringing electricians, pipe fitters, uh, bricklayers, carpenters, all these people to be working here in Saginaw. We're gonna even see cranes up in the city of Saginaw. When was the last time you seen a crane up in the city of Saginaw? I go to big cities all the time and I see these cranes and I be thinking, man, we ain't building nothing. And now we got opportunity to build something, gonna be bright for the future of Saginaw, right on the river. So I'm looking forward to this. Uh, if the city, uh, deemed, or the county deemed to donate, uh, property to them, I'm all for it because they bringing back tenfold amount of money that we putting involved in that. And besides, uh, we have gave them five million dollars of our money, so we definitely want to see this project happen. And the county even gave them five million dollars. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the Shaheen Development do what they do. And I'm feel thankful for you guys too. Some months ago, maybe five, six years ago, I was scared they gonna turn the, uh, city of Saginaw into Shahe- city of Shaheen. But you guys keep on doing what you're doing, maybe we get that done later. But, uh, you know, there's a lot of great things happening for the city of Saginaw. And I'm happy to be involved, you know, just a little bit in that. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
See you guys Wednesday.
What'd you say?
See you Wednesday, three PM.
Next, we have Councilman Austin.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, Councilman Balls, I will see you there at the house, so come up for a tour. Um, with not reiterating everything that they're talking about with the Medical Diamond, just my perspective on this project and the way I've looked at it over the last few years. This, we keep saying transfer, transformational, but cities built from the outs, from the inside out, not the outside in. And that, and if you know anything about Jane Jacobs, she will, it's a good movie to watch, Citizen Jane, she'll talk about that. So not only is the Medical Diamond gonna be important for a riverfront development and a park, but it's also gonna spur other development, which you kind of talked about. And we've seen that. We're gonna have doctors and students that need housing, uh, right next to the Cathedral District. So there's probably gonna be more that we're gonna see in our city than just the College of Medicine and the hotel and everything that we're talking about here tonight. So, that's, um, what I'll say about that. And you're right, the MCBI building, I remember when that was built. And then Garber brought his entire staff down to work in the city of Saginaw. So that created an income tax base for us, so thank you. Um, we talked about the homeless, I want to thank everybody, SC Chap, for doing everything that you do in the city of Saginaw. I did go to your website today and I did pull some information on that. I was blown away by the members that are available there and just the things that you're doing in the city. And so, Chuckie Lawrence, thanks for coming out, my friend, and talking about what you were talking about. And I think what we need to do is, even like in the city of Saginaw, if we don't know about something, we can't do something. So when we find out about something, report it to us, or report it to the organization so we can rapid house these people and get them where they need to be. Um, just a couple of announcements I have. This Sunday, August third, at the Old Town Film, uh, Old Town Film Chair Festival, just before the movie, the Latinos Leaders for Equity and Advocacy in Development, better known as LEED, the Saginaw Chapter, is having an event. I am working side-by-side with Cristiano McElara and I'm sponsoring the event, I'm providing all the food. So come on down at five PM, it's called Eat in the Streets. And we're looking to feed a hundred and twelve people. We've got hot dogs, all the condiments to go with it, and water and such. And then that'll transition right into the movie at seven PM. But they will be, so they're gonna serve from five till seven-thirty PM. So please come out and enjoy yourself there. Um, on July twenty-third, this past week, I'm, my, uh, City Manager Morales and myself and Mayor Protem Garcia had the opportunity to meet with our sister city, Tokishima, Japan. Their students were here, it was an excellent event. They had a lot of tough questions, that's what I'm gonna say. So it was a lot of Q and A, but it was, it was a really good visit with the kids. And over this last week, I'm probably not gonna be able to talk about it, but we had some trash issues. That's because trucks were down on Wednesday, created a backlog, and we did get finally caught up. But there was a lot of chatter about that on, on social media, so just know that we're working on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Bradock.
Um, good evening, everyone, um, good evening, Madam Mayor. Um, hello, everyone, um, just like to say that, um, I'm excited about the future of Saginaw, um, with the Medical Diamond. This is my first year, I know it's a lot of work getting that, uh, process started. So it's good to see that, the change to come to Saginaw. Um, and so, you know, to see jobs coming is very important. Also for the, the subject of homelessness, those who spoke out, I'm glad y'all spoke out about it. I live downtown and over the, over the past five, six years, and, um, I would say that the home, homelessness is, seems to be increasing around my area. And, um, I, I believe that there's something that we need to target. I don't know if it's, 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 if it's decreasing. It looked like it's going to be increasing homelessness with a lot of cuts and a lot of different changes. But, um, what's important is we do have people in the city on ground, like, uh, Bishop Atkins. I had an opportunity to visit his facility and, um, it was very nice, it was very nice. And, um, and they doing a lot, I got to meet one of the, um, homeless residents and, um, and so provide jobs. And, um, I said, he don't baby them, Bishop Atkins don't baby them. He push them, he push them to, um, push them to, um, over, to overcome what their circumstances is. And so I think those efforts is good and I believe that, uh, we need more efforts throughout the community, um, like that. Um, and looking at my thing, I hope to see a day shelter somewhere. But I know there's a lot of factors with that, and so that's something that we need to look into. Um, also too, with, um, our youth, the summer's been hot. Um, I've seen, um, Victorious Community Development, First Ward, and all the other community, um, services have been out. I've been seeing kids at Hayco Beach, I've been, kids going to the Y, um, been taking the kids over. Um, we also had the opportunity, the youth out of Birch Park Apartments. And we've been taking them everywhere all over the summer, to the Y and to the beach. And so, we've been, um, putting our efforts to make sure that our community is moving forward and that we have some positivity going on. Um, we still have to address, um, violence, the gun violence in our city. Um, if y'all, you know, guns is a problem, you know, these young folks is getting their hands on guns. So we, let's make sure we keep our, uh, make sure we keep a sight on that. But, um, but otherwise, I, I like the future, I, I'm excited about the future of Saginaw. And I, um, I think we're going to be looking really good in the next few years, um, with our parks. So Jeway is looking good, um, right now. And so next year, I think we're gonna see some significant changes and some positive changes. So, that's all I have and that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. Um, for those of you who spoke on homelessness, um, thank you for, for your words. I actually, uh, work, uh, not, uh, a couple blocks off of South Washington near, uh, the, uh, main post office. And I decided to leave my office, I don't usually, for about ten minutes, just got in my car and took off and, uh, took a drive um, from my office, uh, did a little loop by the marketplace, Van Croft, um, swept by, uh, Michigan, and just came back. And in that time, I saw at least six people sleeping on the ground. Uh, this was broad daylight in the middle of the day. So we do need something that is, um, more cohesive. And I appreciate Bishop, um, and Mr. Lawrence for doing what you do. Uh, cause the need kind of, to me, uh, from the outside, you know, we need to do more. And I appreciate the, the traditional methods that are out there, but tradition doesn't work for everyone. So I think the more cohesive and collaborative that we can, um, present to our city, our residents, um, the better. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. Um, regarding the Medical Diamond, really, really excited about that. Um, appreciate the positions that will be created, um, and the growth that, uh, will be a catalyst for the city. Um, that being said, I will say the other G word, and that's gentrification. People are scared about that. And I want to make sure that all of the citizens of Saginaw benefit from this. Um, whether it be, you know, building better parks and areas that are, you know, non-existent. Or we just, I just don't want every, people to be forgotten. Uh, that's very important. Um, been here for years and I appreciate the new people that will come in. But we want to keep an eye on the people that are already here and have been here. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Hennig.
Thank you so much. And, um, thank you to the members of the Saginaw community, to our leaders and the people who work tirelessly every single day to make Saginaw a better place for coming out to this meeting. I see many of you in this room and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And, um, I took a short trip this week, um, to Traverse City. Uh, I just kind of wanted to work out of a different place and I've been working remotely, I have that privilege. So, um, I also know friends, some of them in the city leadership there, who have been tackling their homelessness issue. I left on Friday. Thursday night, I had a conversation with one of those community leaders, somebody who had stepped up in their community. And we talked about the issue of homelessness. We talked about the crime rate, we talked about gentrification, we talked about how the city had seen a boon, but the housing couldn't keep up and it was getting worse and worse. And, um, there was an unfortunate mass tragedy event at a Walmart. And it appears that the person who committed that crime was a homeless individual who had recently been evicted from a homeless encampment, who was no, who was no longer receiving any sort of mental health assistance or treatment. I live downtown, I see the growing issues every single day. And what I also see is a administration at the federal level that is hell-bent on making this problem worse. There is a plan to do a hundred percent cut to CDBG funds. And it is most likely that those cuts will happen. Those cuts are also happening to our public housing, those cuts are also most likely going to happen to Section Eight. And when that happens, our problems are going to explode. I believe we need to get ahead of this issue. And I need to believe that we need everybody at the table in order to make that happen, all solutions. And I, I, I fear, I fear that reality. But the point is, is that it's reality. Um, I also want to thank all the community members who express any level of interest in their government. Uh, to be honest, what I'm most surprised about being on this council is I don't get enough complaint emails. Um, I represent a city of forty-five thousand people, it's an at-large position. And honestly, I only get like two a week that I think are sent to the whole council. Complain more to me, tell me more about the problems, tell me more what makes it hard to be a resident of this community. Because I'm, I'm right there with you, I want to walk with you, I want to feel those issues. And I want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make the city a better place. Because when you step up, even if you're coming with your emotions and you're coming with your feelings, you're coming. You're here, your voice is being heard. So no matter what state of emotion you're in, I want to hear your voice, I want to hear your issues, and I want to invite you to be part of the solution where we're at the table, making things work. So thank you so much to the people who, other people might say you're complaining, I say you're engaging and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Council, next we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, thank you for coming to your City Council meeting, uh, today. I'd like to say thank you for, uh, all of the young people that, uh, came up and, uh, spoke this evening. Um, uh, I know we have sometimes differences of opinions, uh, for different things and that's good. That give us something to, uh, engage in, you know, we have to, we have to make the hard decisions sometime. Uh, I know, uh, Ms. Arda Davis is a trailblazer in regards to homelessness and a lot of different things. Pastor, uh, Chet Atkins, a trailblazer in regards to homelessness. Pastor Chet Atkins, a trailblazer in regards to homelessness. So we just have to get the information that you all have gave us, and we have to make tough, tough decisions. Thank you all to Mr. Ken Horn and everyone that spoke about the Medical Diamond. I do have questions later that I will direct to city manager, and he will disperse those questions, however he will, in regards to the upcoming, and I, I'm so for it. It's going, it's gonna definitely be awesome. I know it's gonna be awesome, but definitely have a couple of questions, you know. I wouldn't be a city council representative city without having a couple of questions, but I know it's gonna be definitely awesome. Think Ms. Melanie, I think we need air dresses in regards to the trees hanging over the lights. Definitely have to have some air dresses. I've seen those too. I've seen them hanging over the stop signs, and I've ran a couple of stop signs because I didn't know that the stop signs were there, because the trees were hanging over the stop signs. So, you know, thank you all for coming. You all have a beautiful rest of the day, and I look forward to engaging real soon in the next few minutes. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next we have Mayor Protem Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. I would like to say thank you to all our speakers for coming. It's not always an easy matter to discuss these topics at times, especially for the homelessness. I work firsthand, I'm the vice president of the Eastside Soup Kitchen. I was there last Friday, we served 1,100 people. Okay? So some of these you probably see during lunchtime, and then they gone, and they're out for the day. So I know firsthand, I've been a social worker in the city for over 15 years. So I know, I'm in the front lines, I sympathize with you guys' work. Ms. Davis, I know you've been doing it for a long time, and I commend you guys, and the whole, I appreciate the documents here, but when I got the last documents last time, it seemed like a duplicate, and me, I always do my research, so I just wanted to make sure everything, and I appreciate this information, because sometimes we're not aware of this stuff unless it's given to us, or we do our own research, so I really appreciate that. And I also wanna say to the Medical Diamond, to Mr. Shaheen and your great team there, and Mr. Horn for coming out to speak on that, this has been in the works, from my understanding, and I'm 42, so I know it's been a lot longer, but I've seen the work that you guys have done in our community, and for us not to say, hey, we want this, this is what we want for our community, we want to move Saginaw forward, we, why can't we compete like Midland and Basie, why can't we be like these bigger cities? We want all that, you know, we want the housing, we talk about it all the time, we want the restaurants, you know. We want the hotel again. I remember the Crown Plaza, I was little, but I remember, it was great. I was in my twenties when we'd go there, but they had a swimming pool, it was right there next to the Dow Event Center now, but there's so much potential down in that area, and I can't wait to see it manifest. It's gonna be great, I'm excited, it's gonna bring jobs. That's what we want in this city of Saginaw, wanna bring it up. Gemra Motors ain't here no more. So what do we do? We go to the next step, and it's the Medical Diamond, because that's where we're, where we're seeing the need, you know, the education, you know, all that stuff that's gonna come, and it's gonna be so awesome. So, you know, I appreciate you guys for coming, and just letting council know, because I know I'm, my third year in council, so some of the council members are new, just to know what's going on, and it's always interesting just to see what you guys are coming up with, and I'm excited, so you definitely have my support, I appreciate it. Stars, the Saginaw County Fairs this week, if you go on Stars, they are offering transportation to get out there, so I just wanted to bring that up, it's $5 each way. And also, I got this, and it's See You at the Library Event, August 16, 2025, at Hoyt Library, so if you get an opportunity to come out, it's giving families together, libraries across the country. So if you got, it's free, go out there. If you go on their website for the Saginaw Public Libraries, you can add access to all their events as well. So thank you for coming, and have a good night. Let's work.
It's my turn. You know, I'm totally speechless, for real, for real. The week has been a long week, and I know I'm dragging. I had the opportunity to be in Chicago, looking at other agencies and talking about Saginaw and our elderly population. There are changes coming, a lot of changes, and we gotta move with the times. We can no longer just sit back and complain. I appreciate all of the public speakers who spoke tonight. I'm into collaborating. At this point in the game, it is gonna be difficult if, like Councilwoman Hammond said, budget cut, CBDG, block grant money. We can only survive in this city if we work together. All of the programs I heard tonight are wonderful. How can we work together? They only got a little money to work with, and we have to take that into account. When we sit at this table, I think people don't realize, this is really not an easy job at all, at all, because you gotta make some tough decisions. I truly have had the opportunity of working on the Medical Diamond. I actually went to Washington to speak about getting money. Yes, I go in there just like I do when I'm here, we ain't got no money, and we need some money. But the one thing I like about this whole venture that I've been on with the Medical Diamond is the fact that we all have a common goal, and that's to make this city better. There is so many things that we can do instead of complaining. Councilwoman Hammond says she don't get that many calls. I wish I was that blessed. I swear, my bone rings if a toenail is broke. But it's good, because sometimes people just wanna talk. No, my number has probably been on the bathroom at the county jail, 'cause that's my old profession. Not because I was an inmate, trust me. Trust me, I was not an inmate. But I just really want everybody to understand, I've been saying this for the past, what? This is my third time as mayor for the past five years. It is a new season. It's a new day. And Saginaw is not gonna be left behind, not on my watch. We're gonna do everything we need to do to move this city forward, and for those who got a whole lot of issues, I'm sorry. Bye-bye.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
On to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a few items before, and I do wanna talk about development and the Medical Diamond as well. But first, I wanna remind everyone of, we have two more family playdates in the park left. August 8th, Friday, 4 to 7, next door, tennis and pickleball, and then August 22nd, the pre-play date. And I wanna recognize Cassie again for taking up that project and doing that work and getting it done, since we don't have, necessarily have a Parks Department anymore, the resourcefulness there has been greatly appreciated. We currently also have a land agreement with the Saginaw Public Schools for the Janet Nash Preserve. Since the new school is across the street, I think the school wants to take greater ownership in that property and do some additional work and rehab there. They're going to be canceling that contract, it's a three-party contract between the city, Saginaw County, and, and the schools. The majority of that contract for the city was in the initial phases. We managed the construction project and worked with the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. At this point, the state of the contract is really, we pick up the trash from the trashcans that are there, the Saginaw County Mose, I think the eight-foot right-of-way, and then something in there about infrastructure maintenance, so we're fine with them taking it over and taking ownership of that since they're across the street. We should be getting that letter pretty soon. As Councilman Oshstesh said, we had an opportunity to meet with the Tokushima High School students. They come here very regularly, talking to SVSU, SVSU sponsors that trip, and thank you to Councilman Oshstesh and Mayor Protem for, for visiting with them, with me. They did make an interesting comment, and I think it'd be a great project for our city-county school liaison group, but they encouraged us to try to be able to send Saginaw Public School students to Tokushima. Tokushima, the city of Tokushima provides funding for those students to come here, I think they said about a third. So it'd be interesting to get more information from SVSU and see how we could work with the public schools. It'd be a great opportunity for our students, I think, to, to go there and visit and learn more. We also used to have a contingent of council members that went. Years ago, not that, not that long, I haven't been here that long. We used to go alternate every two years, one year we would send a delegation to Tokushima, and then the next year they would come here. I think next year, Tokushima folks are coming to Saginaw, so it may be a good time to start planning. And, and last time we did that, we had a few council members and a number of community members that went, so I think that'd be an exciting opportunity. Our next citywide meeting is Wednesday, August 13th. We're going to have that at the Saginaw Community Action Center, 2824 Perkins Street, 5:30. Come join us and hear more about the ARPA recipients and the projects that they're working on in the city. We see, this evening, we have the mission, vision statements, and, and the core values on our agenda. Last time I mentioned that we wanna have a committee of the whole meeting to review the tax cap, and after getting the comments back from the department heads, I wanna include the goals and priorities in that meeting, so I wanna make it a little bit longer. I still wanna do it in August, I wanna start it at 5:30 prior to a council meeting, so if you could provide me feedback in the next few days on which meeting works better for you, if you need to coordinate with work or whatever happens to be, please let me know, and then we'll get that scheduled. And now we get to our economic development and council communication number two. So hearing everyone talk, it really goes back several years ago. I'd already worked on the MCBI development that Mr. Shaheen mentioned. And I was here when we, I think, I don't even think I was here when we first did the first condo development agreement, but we renewed that, and that commitment that they made to Old Town, and was phenomenal. I think those were our first new housing building permits in the city of Saginaw for probably 25 or 30 years. So that was, they took a chance on that, and, and we really thanked them for that. And you can see some of the other developments in Old Town, and I know more to come. So the track record there is phenomenal, and, and I have to tell you, to be honest, you know, we don't have a lot of developers, developers coming and knocking down our doors to build. So we have these great local developers, and they do an excellent job, and they work well with our staff and with other businesses. I'll tell you, what I've seen, even in the last month or so with, with the Medical Diamond and working on this development, when items or businesses are going to go in in that area, it's gonna have a significant impact on the businesses around there. Restaurants across the street already, we have another restaurant that's being rehabbed downtown, and I can tell you, I think some of the other new investment is because of the expectation of the Medical Diamond. And if you go back years ago, Larry Klearus, who used to be on council, owned a bar and restaurant downtown, and he would talk to me about how many lunches they did at the bar, and that was because people worked downtown, and that's, that's what we want to encourage here. Then we, we start to think about, well, what, what is the community impact of a development like this? And I think you can go down the line, if you go back to MCBI, the number of available medical treatment in the city of Saginaw because of that is also extensive. And Tricity Urology, I think the pain management group is there, MCBI, so our residents don't have to go to Ann Arbor or Detroit all of the time for that. There will be additional treatment here, and there's a significant part of this, it's talked about our last citywide meeting, where there will be additional behavioral health treatment, and that's, that's part of our ARPA, that's what we allocated the ARPA for. Significant enough that Great Lakes Bay Health is working with Central Michigan University Graduate Medical Education to enhance that even further, and that will be on this site. So then, you see those benefits. The $33 million in federal and state allocations to Saginaw for the downtown riverfront were because of the potential of economic development in this, in this area. I mean, every allocation request made referenced this Medical Diamond and the potential for medical education and its impact on the downtown development. So one of our goals is always to increase population, increase business, increase our tax base, and, and this does all of that, but also the, the additional impact is, we have a designed multimillion-dollar park on the riverfront that we would not have without this development. That was also in, in our asks, but that's gonna be a reality, and that's really what we have control over. And, you know, you start to, and maybe it's part of, you know, we look back at our strategic planning session, and we talked a lot about communication, and how do we get this information out? Maybe if people aren't aware of the park, maybe that's another case study that we can look at, how do we get this information out? Because our staff, Cassie and Phil Carwatt, our engineering team, and Scape, who designed the park, they engaged with so many different groups to get input about this park. What do you wanna see in the park? What do you wanna develop? What amenities do you want? What kind of an impact do you think it'll have on the riverfront? From working with students at Saginaw United, I met, they met with them multiple times to see what they wanted in the park. They met with people who are interested in the environment and the riverfront, and what he, and, and creating fishery habitats. They met with businesses down there, they met with neighborhood associations. So the, the amount of people that they've engaged has really been phenomenal, and hopefully they can get that word out as well. And going back to the development agreement, something we always include, we always have deliverables, so there are items in there that Shaheen Development will provide, and they'll work with the city staff on that. And we always have reconveyance clause if the project doesn't happen. So there, there's a protection in there for the property, there's deliverables, and I did, I did receive a question, have we ever done the reconveyance? I can tell you that we've done it, I think, at least two or three times in the last five years on, on various projects. So we do keep an eye on that, we watch and make sure businesses, developers do what they're gonna say, and, and we hold them to that. Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Wow, that was a lot. Do we have any questions for the city manager? Yes, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you very much. Kind of just a little bit off, but... I had a few questions by different people in the community in regards to the transferring of the, the land, and how different other people had wanted land that may have been adjacent to their property, or, and they've had like several hiccups, or they just couldn't acquire that property, or it was astronomical, and they have been taking care of that property for many years. So what, what's the difference in them that may have been taking care of property for years? And I think I use for an example, Word of Faith International Ministries, that took care of property for over 20 years, and they were being assessed over $10,000 to purchase property that they had taken care of very beautifully for over 20 years. And another person had been taking care of property, cutting the grass, et cetera, just keeping it up, and was assessed several hundred dollars, you know, and could have maybe purchased that property that they had been keeping up for, you know, for $1. So what's the difference?
What's the difference between a development agreement and that?
Yeah.
I think that the main difference is because we have the expectation of a significant amount of investment in the creation of additional revenue for the city. So when we see something like this, if it's going to be a $35 million investment, mixed-use development, it's gonna create jobs, it's gonna create income tax revenue through that, it's gonna create... going to create property tax revenue from that, and it's, it's going to bring more people downtown. So if you're talking about a side lot plan or some, you know, purchase of a side lot, that, that's, I think, the difference. But those are mainly land bank properties, right, that you're talking about?
Right, right.
So that's probably a more significant question for the land bank.
Okay. And I've asked, so they, so they just won't come to a council meeting? I've asked you that, like, a couple of years, they just won't come, or?
Well, we've, we've invited them before.
Okay, and they just won't show up? Okay, okay. So anyway, in regards to the, with this, or should I say this for when we go to the particular number two, or should, or since you mentioned it now, which one? Do I mention it now, or?
You can accept whatever, I mean, either way.
Okay, it doesn't matter. I'll just wait. I'll wait. Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Tim, the only thing I was going to mention, kind of question, is you talked about our parks, and we're building a new park. And we, as a council, I think, should start thinking about and working with our city staff on what, what did Parks and Recreation look like? And what would a little Parks and Recreation Department, coming back to the city, because we're going to have a whole new park to take care of. Director Carwatt and I kind of had a sidebar conversation about this. So I just want to plant that seed, if we can start to think about that. I don't know how this works. I don't remember what the old one was, because that was before I moved into the city. That was eliminated due to the tax cap.
The, and that's an interesting comment. I think in our strategic planning session, we did talk about that, and I think the goal that came out of that session was to allocate $100,000 to, to parks each year. Interestingly enough, and when we do our committee of the whole, this will be in the recommendations, our staff is upping that to $300,000 to $500,000 a year. So that's one of the changes that we'll talk about. Great opportunity. I mean, we have this park system behind us. So Saginaw is very successful at getting Michigan DNR Trust Fund grants for parks. And so we've always tried to coordinate those parks and create this central park type, from the skate park, and now moving down the riverfront through Ojibwe, and, and this will be the newest park. But we can continue to apply for grants. We have grant goals in that strategic plan, too, that we'll talk about more. But I think there's also an opportunity, and I've talked to Brian Leckel, who's the County Parks Director, about, can we potentially partner with the county on employees for parks? And, and the reason why I bring that up is because, if you recall, for several years, we didn't have the bathrooms open at the splash pad. The reason for that is because we have three employees in the budget, and we could hardly, we couldn't hire three people, just because of, it's, it's a limited schedule, sometimes it's difficult to hire. And I, I'll probably get the number wrong, but I think the county parks hire 60 to 80 employees a year. So if we could get them, even if, you know, we fund them, so that they do the, the work in, in the parks and some of the recreational activities, I think that's an opportunity for us.
All right. Well, thanks for that. Thanks for entertaining that. And even, even with the bigger parks that we are going to build, I mean, we still have neighborhood parks where, even in my neighborhood, I see kids playing basketball, but there's no nets on the hoops. And so we focus on all of them, is what I'm, I'm kind of getting to, so.
It's called adopt a park.
I did. I got one already.
This is the last one, Councilwoman. I'm going back and forth.
So is there somebody over here? Are you talking to him?
Oh, you spoke already. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. So just to clarify, because I wrote a note to ask, when you mentioned that we want to have a committee of the whole meeting with goals and priorities, you mean all of the goals and priorities for all of the identified five buckets, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're going to dig into all of them during that committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, at least we'll present the new ones, and then if we have to have more discussion at the council meeting, because committee of the whole, you can't have approvals, but we'll have a presentation about the tax cap and, and developing talking points for that that we can give, give an example of and sample for council, and then we'll go through those with the changes. And then council, if council members look at those and have any suggestions, please feel free to send those to me, too, and I can incorporate them in the presentation.
And, and just second question, for calendar dates for that, can we first send our availabilities to Vicki and coordinate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Because my end of August is starting to look pretty, okay. Appreciate it.
Councilman Brellak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City manager, I just wanted a question, if we haven't done this already. I would like to see if, as, as the city council, we recognize boxers, Robert Sims and Jermaine Franklin. I don't know if y'all have done it already, I'm new on this board over the years. But Robert Sims fought at Clarissa Shields, fight very big stage. We do have two big fighters from Saginaw fighting on very big stages. There's a lot of hard work. I was able to talk to him before the fight and after. And I would just would like for our city to recognize those young men if we can. They represent our city pretty well. The families was down there and then everything. So Saginaw was impressive at the fight. Dakota Security was down there. And so, but as far as for Robert Sims, Jermaine Franklin, they are fighting on really big stages. So if y'all see them guys, man, if y'all don't know them, Google them. If y'all see them, congratulate them, give them a handshake. They're really working hard. Robert Sims took a loss at the fight, but he fought a opponent that knocked out everybody, so he took him to distance. So these guys are making really good marks. I don't hear. So I would like to see our city council as a board recognize them, if we haven't done so already.
Get the information to them. There's a form you fill out. You'll get the form, fill it out.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Jermaine is my nephew, so anyway.
Okay, cool.
And he got his hands put in. But are you talking about, like, what, my question was, Parks and Recreation, or just parks? That's what was the question.
Yeah, you mean, like, for additional fights in the future? Yeah, I think it would be for both Parks and Recreation, too.
Okay, okay.
You know, so, like, the events we had this year, family playdates in the park, we would really like to expand those, and I think that's in addition to our goals and objectives, too.
Okay, yeah, that's a simple question. I just had a question. The engagement, too, was that that one with the Parks and Survey that they had at our trunk or troop for the kids?
Yes, they were here for that.
Okay, because that was really cool.
Yeah, and they had individual sessions. So I did forget, they did, they also engaged the Saginaw Chippewa Tribe with planning, too.
Yeah, because I know we had a lot of kids that came through, and I seen them interact, and I thought that was really cool, because not all the time you get that much people in one setting, and you got to partake in it. So that was awesome.
Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, during your tenure as city manager, which has been, what, seven, eight years?
It's been since 2013.
Oh, really? I swear you said seven, never mind, okay.
No, 17 years I've been with the city.
Oh, okay, wow. Just trying to be generous. But during your tenure as manager, how many buildings have been demolished that, while they were being demolished by the city, were listed on the historic register?
I don't know what that number is, but we can look, look into it. So, but I will say that, I mean, you mean just over the past 17 years?
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't think typically, we haven't been demolishing commercial buildings, that would be. Those are, if it's an emergency demo, or it's falling in the road, then it could be. The one that I can recall that we did do is, is where we have a potential new development that we're working on with a developer at the foot of the bridge, Genesee Bridge. We might have demoed that, but the developer did, or the owner of the building did pay for it. Most of those commercial demos are done by the, the land bank.
I see. And do you know how many of those buildings that were demolished that were on the historic register were assessed at some point by a certified structural engineer to see the cost of abatement versus the cost of demolition?
No, we could look, you mean, we could look into that, but, you know, by the point, so if we get back to the building that was talked about last week, when we get to a point where we have public safety personnel reviewing it and determining that it's a dangerous building based on the state law, once that's determined, we have a significant amount of liability in working, so we don't necessarily have weeks and months to wait for that. We did do that, and I'm not, I'm going to forget the name of the building, but it was another building on Genesee. But we had that building looked at by a structural engineer, I believe, and it was up for months in that condition. And, you know, talking with staff, it's not something that we can do again and have that much liability and potential for injury to the public. So, you know, is there a way to work with some of the individuals that own businesses or land banks before you get to the, in the land bank before you get to that point? There probably is. And we can definitely meet, talk about potential ways to do that. So it is something that we can definitely work on.
I, I would say we absolutely need to. I, for one, don't like looking at a wasteland out on our downtown. When, when I go to other downtowns, and it's, you know, the contiguous buildings of historic importance are just gone.
Yeah.
So, you know, put two and two together, which means usually the city doesn't get a property, we're not notified of a property, it doesn't come into our possession, or we don't have the ability to do anything until it becomes a danger, combined with the fact that when it becomes a danger, a dangerous building ordinance only gives us the ability to demolish, not to abate.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, I'd be happy to meet with you and walk through the ones that, since I've been here, but we have varying solutions that we've done, you know, and it's based on a kind of a case by case. So I'll say the, the Arcade Building was one that, and I, I'm not going to remember the year, but the entire back wall collapsed into TB5 parking lot. And that would be considered a dangerous building under the state, state law. However, the issue with that building was that the two buildings next to it were occupied. So demolition wasn't necessary, necessarily a possibility that would work well, because we couldn't, you know, we talked to different contractors, and we can't ensure that it's not going to damage those other buildings. So we met with each building. So in that case, the city did, did pay to build the new back wall. So when we do that, similar to the demo I mentioned, then we bill that back to the property owner. In that case, the property owner was an LLC with zero assets. So again, we, that was general fund money that we didn't get coming back, and I think it was over $200,000, maybe $250,000 to do that. So, you know, that's a different situation. The Behringer Building is, and that's important, because we just had the development agreement with that. If you, the history of that building, it was a purchase by a private individual. They got an SEDC loan, they defaulted on the loan, it was an SEDC foreclosure. SEDC had, I believe, it was an SEDC development agreement for three years, or maybe even a little bit longer. That developer backed out. Then it started to need at least a minimal level of stabilization in some tuck pointing, some boarding windows. The basement needed some work because it was flooding. SEDC doesn't have money to do that, they're not allowed to spend money on that. So they transferred that building over to the city, and then it's on, it was on our list for sale for years. But that one, it was a structurally sound building, we knew that, we worked to market it. You could talk to Cassie more, because she works with redevelopment-ready communities that had additional funding for us to market that. So there's varying different cases. A great case also is the Temple Theater, which I believe was about ready to have the roof cave in, that a local family spent millions of dollars on to, to rehab and restore.
Any more questions? Yes.
No, I just want to join this conversation. The dangerous building ordinance actually has two off-ramps. It's make safe or demo. And if you talk to the city attorney, if you get into a hearing process with the building owner, a lot of times this building is sitting there for some reason, normally there's no funds. And so you run into a situation that the hearing officer can make a determination to demo or make safe, and if make safe, that puts the burden back on to the building owner, but then they don't have any funds anyways. So you end up in a vicious cycle of, of what's happening with, with a DBO, Dangerous Building Ordinance, let's just acronym it. And then in the historic district, you have demolition by neglect, which is another situation that we get into, being a historic district commissioner from 2006 to 2018, is that it's the same situation. We, the, the commission can go in or make repairs and put the, put the repairs onto the tax roll, back to the person that owns the building. But then, in both situations, somebody might come along, want to buy the building, and now there's back taxes and all these fees and stuff. So they, you kind of look at it like, do I really want to take this on? So this has bothered me ever since I've moved into the city and I saw this, because there was a lot of loss by the time I'd actually gotten here. And talking about the building that was next to the bridge that the city manager talked about was the Hubble Building, which had the beautiful eagles on it, that building actually had, like, three stories added to, added to the building. It was a car dealership, they parked them inside at one time. But that created weight on the structure, and like, one day the wall just, like, blew out right onto Genesee Avenue. So working with our state legislators, I've got a rough draft, I've been working with our city attorney on, trying to figure out, like, an off-ramp, like, way ahead of the process, before the building ends up in the land bank, because that can take three years of non-property taxes. And after 180 days, you can enact your DBO ordinance. If the building's vacant, you can actually start to take some action. That is both with the state law and with local law, because all municipalities ordinances are kind of created from the home, from the home, from the Home Act, through the Housing Act, that is where all this starts. So hopefully, cross your fingers, we might get something where we can head it off ahead of time, where we could have a hearing and say, okay, so maybe you need to sell the building, or do something with it. Some cities will start fining, they'll start fining you. Well, we already have a, we already have a vacant property ordinance on that. It's a small fee of 150 a year. Some cities may have them pay up as much as 1,200 or 2,000. In Saginaw, I don't think that's a good fit either, because again, we're, we're trying to move the building forward. And I just had this conversation with a run of our residents yesterday. And there's been some buildings that have been bought along Genesee Avenue now, too, and it's like, so what are they doing? And I think we need to look at that. And so our HDC commissioners, they are in the national district, they kind of have, that's kind of what they're tasked with, that's part of their ordinance, is to kind of look outside the local districts, but also look at, like, what's in the city that maybe we need to kind of move forward. So I would love to be a part of that conversation, Tim. This is my wheelhouse for 20 years, or 16, 15. So if you sit down, invite me, I'll, I'll come.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk.
As to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage or on SGTV. No, I take that back. It's not been available.
My city website.
You took my stuff away, Miss Chris.
My city website.
It's been available at City Hall and on the city webpage. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Do we have any exceptions? Yes.
Number two.
Are there any more exceptions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number two is to approve the purchase and development agreement with the Saginaw County Land Bank Authority and Downtown Development LLC for 602, 610, and 620 South Water Street, and 603, 607, 611, and 615 South Washington Avenue. That was Councilmember Hammond.
I have a few questions on the contract itself, so I assume there'd be questions for this table, just off the, off the bat. I'm very interested, and I, there are things that I like about this agreement, and there are things that I have questions about. So first, this is the first time I'm hearing that this in particular land agreement is in reference to a $35 million mixed-use development. Can you tell me more about the distinction between the $35 million mixed-use development? Does this involve the $5 million ARPA agreement for the Great Lakes Bay Health Center building, or is that completely separate? And also, are we talking about $35 million of a planned $200 million project? Basically, I'd just like to suss out the distinction between what we're talking about here with what this land and this contract is specifically for.
Yeah, so this is... Yeah, so this is, uh, would include the Behavioral Health Clinic, Great Lakes Bay Health. I mentioned at the last meeting, they have a contract with Shaheen Development for developing that building.
I'm so sorry, can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, that, it does include that Behavioral Health Clinic. I think, um, we mentioned that at the last meeting, that they had a contract with Shaheen Development. I think they mentioned that at the, um, citywide meeting too. And, um, so we know that building's included. I think the, uh, the $35 million investment came from Mr. Shaheen when he spoke, so that's developer's intent. There isn't an amount in the development agreement.
I noticed. Um, so, when we talk about, um, the specifics under the Section 5 covenants as to develop improvements in ownership, um, I'm glad to see this. I think this is what I like to see in terms of like an exchange and a good development agreement. Um, what I was wondering is, um, the architecture design and engineered site plan that was referenced, that has not been submitted to the city in official capacity yet, correct?
Correct, yes. It says after closing, so.
Okay, after closing. Um, also, when we talk about the development consists of residential, retail, and medical clinical space, um, also for a mixed-use development, are all of those developments going to happen on the property that is in this agreement?
Yes. I mean, there may, and there may be additional properties too. There are, um, currently two, actually three privately held, oh, I'm sorry, four, I think. Four privately held parcels in that block.
Okay. Um, and then...
Hold tight, hold tight. Does anybody else have any questions?
She has a question.
Pardon me, Ms. Attorney?
No, Ms. Hammond looked confused. I was indicating that she's allowed two questions, and then move on to someone else to see if they have other questions before coming back to her.
No, I, I'll come back to it, but I wanted to do that, that's what I wanted to...
So, that everyone has a chance to speak.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm sorry, I have a point of order on that. I'm so sorry, Monique, but, um, that council rules is in reference to, to speaking on the question, but there's not a motion on the floor?
And I apologize, I'm being corrected by the clerk.
Okay.
Motion to approve to move on to someone else, Mayor.
So, I can continue to ask questions. Thank you. Um, so, my next question is, when we're talking about, um, and, and just to double down on that previous question, Tim, so when we're talking about, um, the mixed-use development and consisting of residential, retail, and medical space, so, when, when you said, yes, it includes like all of the things in this, and there might be more properties added in later, that would be able to count towards these?
No, that's not what I meant.
Okay.
I mean, there's, the, I would anticipate that those develop, these parcels would be completely developed.
Okay.
Um, with the mixed use inclusive of the Behavioral Health Clinic, but, um, there's likely to be additional parcels included that, that we don't own. So, if you move on to the next block, if you move, if you're on this block, you have Nelson Electric still, you have, um, other lots, uh, actually owned by, a lot owned by Shaheen Downtown Development currently. There's two lots owned, um, by the Lee Mansion. The next block is, uh, land bank and privately owned. Uh, if you go north, you have a city lot, you have a, um, you have another land bank lot, and you have another privately owned lot. So, I would anticipate, uh, the development growing over the years into some of those other lots.
Okay. So, basically, if there are properties that are not outlined in this agreement, um, then they don't count towards the, um, covenants that are listed in this agreement in reference to these lots?
Right.
Thank you. So, um, when we're talking about, uh, the section, oh, when it says residential, are we defining that as permanent residential?
Uh, I would anticipate it being rentals. I think that's, we've had discussions...
Sorry, I, I meant like permanent residential as in rentals or own. I, I just mean that it's not like hotel space, for instance.
In this space, I think it's, we're talking about rentals, apartments.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, under Section 6, which is reconvenance, can you just explain really quickly what reconvenance is, and has the city actually used this process before?
Yeah, so reconvenance would be if there are items in Number 5 that aren't, um, that aren't, that don't come to fruition, the city could take the property back, um, and that's in the contract. Also, um, we've had times when the developer determines that it's not a viable project that, and they will give the pro, uh, property back through this reconvenance. Um, we've done it most recently with, uh, Michigan Photo Building. We had a developer who was, um, working on a rehab for that building, or had planned to do a rehab with that building. Um, they, I think we had a development agreement with three or four, uh, vacant lots that the city owned that they anticipated using for parking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for residential space in that building. Ultimately, the developer didn't go through with the project, listed the project for sale, and you'll notice in the contract, you can't transfer those, um, through sale of the specific property. So, we did, uh, go through reconvenance with those properties, and, um, I think that council did, then with the new buyer, enter into a development agreement for the same parking because they have the same, same plan of, uh, having, um, apartments in the building and mixed use. And we also did it, uh, the last development agreement we had with the Civitan Building, ultimately, the developer decided it wasn't a viable project, and I think in that one, they contacted us to reconvey the property. So, two different ways that we did it.
So, it doesn't necessarily need good, I, I always ask about like with, with particular procedures that are essentially clawback, if we actually have the enforcement to enact it, and so you would say that, yes, we do what we've done in the past?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That is what I was getting at, I appreciate that. Um, and then, the, uh, so, so what I like about this contract is that we are basically leveraging the, the sale price, which is a dollar, to say, we want to ensure that this building is going to be invested and built the way that we want it to be. So, I appreciate that, um, I like the spirit of that agreement. Um, there are a couple of points that I'll, I still have that I wanna leave for discussion, um, but the last thing that I wanted to ask about was, um, when we talk about the nondiscrimination in employment and provision of care, and, uh, specifically at the end, I'm just interested, um, if the nondiscrimination in employment and provision of care, does that come from our code of ordinances, or is that just boilerplate that we put into all of our contracts?
It is standard to all of our contracts, yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second. Over here, we can continue discussion because, okay. Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. I, I'm wondering in regards to the, uh, the plans, would, um, would it be consi, uh, at least considered, I, I sent you this, you may not have had a chance to look at it, did you, in regards to the, uh, community benefit agreement?
Yeah, just briefly.
Okay.
Um, I didn't, I didn't read through that whole article, but, um, I don't know that that's necessarily something that would be helpful in, in this agreement, because we know, we, we can see the benefits, and we know the development of park, it's a long-term process. Something, is it something that we can look at, you know, developing for future to include in development agreements?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, potentially, that's something we can look at, and, and I'll forward that to our staff to, to review. Uh, one concern I have with, um, something like that is that, um, Saginaw has been, you know, for the last several years with redevelopment-ready communities, our goal has been to streamline our process and make it easier for development, that's kinda the goal of redevelopment-ready. We start adding bureaucratic labor, layers and requirement that could potentially have an impact on, on that, um, streamlining, one, and two, um, the, you know, we're, we're not the same as Detroit, so we don't necessarily, it might, may not work the same way here. A lot of the projects here are, um, very close to the edge for penciling for, for financial for the developer, so we wanna make sure that we don't impact that too.
But, let's, let's, let's have that something we look at and, uh, sit down, you know, sit down and definitely look at.
I'll send that to staff for review.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. So, um, I wanted to, uh, double down on what Councilwoman Monique was saying there about community benefits ordinance and community benefits agreement. Um, for those who don't know, community benefits agreement is typically something that the city lays on the table essentially as a leveraging point, when there's a developer that's getting significant amount of public funding, uh, something that is not typical as part of negotiations, but it's something that comes out usually from the community, as something they'd like to see investment in. So, I think for this particular project, some of the largest issues that I know that the community has been having are centered around parks and are centered around our public spaces. And we say, wow, you know, one thing I hear a lot is, it's so great we have all of this development coming to our downtown. The other thing I hear is, why the heck are we spending $14 million on a park when we can't keep up with the ones that we already have? So, how do we, and, and knowing the numbers and knowing how development plans work, I know how that has happened. It's, it's a logical step, if you invest in a specific space, that there's a lot of investment in that space. But, I think it is incumbent upon us in this moment to think about, are there opportunities where we can make up for that? Are there opportunities where we can guarantee to the citizens and show them that development in one place means development for the entire city? How other cities have done this with, and it doesn't have to be an ordinance that mandates a whole lot of extra work, it can just be a specific agreement based off of one or two community meetings or surveys where people say, you know, I would feel, and this is just something I've heard a lot, this might come out of these discussions or not, but what if, um, as part of this community benefits agreement, because we're probably going to be, uh, approached again about Oprah, about, you know, other kinds of, of tax credits or incentives, where we can say, okay, in exchange for this, we would like to see investment in maintenance for these three parks, and the developer's going to cover that, which is a fair agreement, because you're getting, you know, this million over here, this million over here, this million, you know, fees, tax, credits, fees, tax. So, that does take some work, because I think that takes some numbers moving of, is this a fair agreement, is this a fair exchange? But, what I think that does, and what we've been hearing constantly, is that the community doesn't feel like they're a part of the discussion. They feel like they hear about things that are happening when the building gets built. They feel like they didn't know and they weren't, didn't have their opinion solicited. And so, I feel like a community benefits agreement that is based off of what we're hearing from public-facing meetings where we say, you get to have a say in how this development affects your neighborhood. I think that helps us out with having people feel like their government is working for them, and also can make sure that that benefits agreement benefits the whole city, to make sure that we're caring for all parts east, west, north, south of Saginaw, rather than just our downtown. So, that is what a community benefits agreement could do. Putting it into the form of an ordinance would essentially require every time something like this comes up, it goes through a CBA process, a Community Benefits Agreement process. But, I would like to see, um, I, I will say that, that I will approve this vote today, uh, because I like what I see in this contract, I like where the city's heads are at, I like where this development is, with the understanding that I think we do need an intervention point to make sure that we're looking at CBOs, CBAs, responsible contracting, and other guaranteed checkpoints to make sure that this money is going where it should be going, and that the citizens feel that they're centered, and that they don't feel left behind. Thank you.
Any other questions? It's been moved as supported, all those in favor of approving item two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How many oppose? Madam Clerk?
I need to report, I need to make a report.
Do we have any reports of any meetings that happened in the last two weeks? Yes, Councilwoman Seale?
Councilman Valls and myself, we attended the City County School Liaison Committee Meeting, and, uh, this past, oh, it was two weeks ago, I believe it was. And, um, it's interesting that Councilman Hammond says, uh, the, uh, the thing she just spoke, and so, um, the school district just informed us, and I think, um, the city manager wasn't there at this particular meeting, so we didn't have an actual report, but they did report out to us, and so, we're bringing this back to the city council. Um, the school district, um, decided, and I know the city manager did say a little something about this today, that they're going to begin to maintain the Janet Nash Nature Preservation across the street from Saginaw United, so they are going to take on that project. Um, that will begin this school year. Their teachers and their students at the high school, um, this is gonna be a part of their curriculum coursework. Um, they are going to take that upon themselves, and the district has informed us that that will be taking place this school year. Um, and I believe they're gonna have some others, into the schools that are, will also help them with this project, it just won't be the high school, so the middle school and elementary schools are going to come over to help them and assist them in this project, but the high school will take the lead on this. Um, also, that the school district has also decided to select two students this school year, they are also in the process, right now, of selecting one junior and one senior to sit on their board. They will have, they will have selected their one junior and one senior this school year by the end of this, uh, end of August, I believe. So, the junior and the senior will sit by their, uh, I believe their meeting at the end of August, will sit on their board, they will have a seat at the table with the Saginaw Public School, um, Board of Educators, um, Board members, they will have two seats for their junior and their senior sitting at the board. And then, they looked at us, the city council people, and say, hey, you guys need to do the same thing. So, they said, go back and talk to your city manager, and said, uh, city council, you guys need to have some students on your city council sitting next to you guys. They, they're not gonna be voting members, but they will have a voice at the table, and said, we should sit down and talk about inviting two students, possibly, um, using their same, um, methodology, um, that they're using, but something that we can sit down and possibly talk about, um, in the next upcoming week, so.
I, I'll add to that, we do have a student position on the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, and we have a student position on the, I think that's the Police Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
So, we currently have two student positions. I think both are unfilled right now.
So, that's something, maybe we can think about, Madam Mayor, um, having a student sitting at the city council table with us, I don't know, if that's something we want to...
Women Leagues of Cities has been working, Women Leagues of Voters, I'm sorry, have been working with the county, and they were trying to develop, we call them, we call them co, co-councilors and co-commissioners. I don't know where they are, but I will check with the group. They're supposed to be working on that, because we've talked about it before, um, not only just on, what is it, when we have Law Day? We need to make this a permanent fixture, if this is all about them, then they need to be entertained.
Yeah.
But, they also need to be educated enough.
To be...
And we need to be educated so that the information that we pass forward is correct.
That's true.
Madam Mayor, it's one thing that we, uh, have discussed at the, uh, School Liaison Board Meeting, that we didn't discuss at this particular time, uh, but we need to do something about these schools that we got sitting around. I mean, it's, it's terrible that they're just sitting there rotting, and a lot of municipalities last seen, uh, they have taken schools and turned them into apartment buildings. My granddaughter stayed in one in Indiana, they were beautiful. Uh, and just recently, Beautiful Vista has turned their high school into the municipal building, and they're gonna have space in it to rent out for other things in it. And not only that, they got, I don't know how many acres they got out there, they can have a carnival, a fair, training, anything out there, that place is humongous. So, I think that we need to start, as a community, city council, that we need to start talking to them about doing something with these schools. You know, maybe, you know, we have big developers, you know, maybe even sitting in this room right now that I know have, uh, turned schools into nursing homes and, and other entities like that, maybe we can get them on board to even help us turn these into apartment buildings. Uh, we, we do need some apartment buildings here on the city of Saginaw, and I believe maybe we get some of the Shaheens and Millers and getting in their room, and maybe they need to do something about these schools, so. The call been put out, so.
Yes, Councilor?
Councilman Valls, the person that is on the school board in my house, just heard that, 'cause he is watching. And, and I can say that the, the old Handley School that's over off of Brockway, they've kept the heat on, on that, because that is kind of the trajectory of what they wanna do, 'cause that could be like the project that they did in Flint with the Coolidge, the Coolidge Project, so, yeah. So, they're, they're actually looking at that, and they're actually, like us, they, they're strapped for funding with demolition too, what needs to come down, so. But, um, they are actively working on it with, uh, Dr. Roberts, yeah.
Any other reports? Madam Clerk?
To appointment of board commission and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one and two, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved as supported, is there any exceptions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
On to ordinance introduction, our first is an ordinance to add section 12.044, titled Saginaw Commission to Address Homelessness to Chapter 12 of Title I Administrative Code of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to introduce.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? Yes.
Appreciate it. I appreciate everybody who has addressed both concerns and hopes for this particular commission, and some of the ideas that have been discussed with its supporters are things that I think that are, some of which the city has done at some point, many of which we have not endeavored to do. One of the suggestions was, with this commission, we could put together a plan and gather resources from some of our local organizations and nonprofits to produce drop bags for our city staff, which I think is something that has been done and put together before. Another idea was making sure that they include maps that are accessible, so people who have reading challenges know where to go to receive services, if they're transient and are just showing up in the city, and some of our staff, which, as they say, are our first responders. Many of those people working out on the lines, police officers, you know, many people just happen to be working somewhere and they encounter somebody who's homeless and needs some help. Those are things that this commission can discuss. Tiny homes development takes more work, more discussion. I don't think we have the time to get into all of that at city council, it was something that the planning commission expressed interest in. Getting things like transitional housing, Bay City was able to get funding for a drop-in shelter through their council, additional funding. And also, I think that I have a very great fear of this problem getting worse. It is a rising trend, and I have seen the numbers from the East Side Soup Kitchen, I have seen the numbers ballooning, and I've seen the resources dropping, and I think that the only way forward in this path is collaboration, is leadership, and I am much more afraid of missing things than I am afraid of duplication. I will say that personally. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yes. You got to talk loud.
Yes, this ordinance on here, is this, I'm sorry, I just, did I just? Chris, do you have me down to second? And can you, I want to renounce, can I take that off, please? Because I-
I also have her council member's seal, so I can just put her council member Sylvia, so I can put her name.
We can't hear y'all talking.
Yes.
I said, she wants her name removed, that's the person that made the second, I also have her council member Sylvia, so I can just-
Thank you.
Change it to her.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Balls.
You know, I understand the pros and the cons of the situation, and, you know, I appreciate the organizations that are working, doing the work that they're doing, and I appreciate the fact that other people want to help out. You know, I wish it's somewhere they can coalesce together to try to help things out with each other. The spirit of someone else trying to help somebody else out is a beautiful thing, you know, and if they want to, if somebody want to get a commission to do that, all power to them, but they need to work with the people that's already doing the work.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't want to see if anybody, if we got enough people to come together, want to be on a board to do that, I think that's a beautiful thing. But they will find out by working with the organizations already doing the work, you can do and can't do, and if you can really help people that don't want to be helped. I mean, you can't force nobody not to be homeless, but hopefully you can get down to the bottom line on why they homeless, and maybe you can get them to understand, or stop using alcohol and drugs, mainly, that's the main reason that a lot of them are homeless, and then we have some people that's had mental issue problems and stuff like that. So when you start digging in the weeds of trying to help somebody, you got to make sure all those organizations are lined up to give them services that they actually need. So if we have a commission that want to do that work and work with the organizations, I'm all for that. So if you guys want to get out there and dig the dirt and get it done, get it done. But don't come back later and say that you couldn't work with organizations that already got the funds.
Thank you.
I mean, when you go out there and ask that homeless person, do they don't want to be homeless, you're going to find out that some of them would prefer to be homeless and be able to ask for money from people so they can get their alcohol and drugs. So it's a task, and I thank God for the people that have the spirit to want to help out. So that's all I want to say on that.
I've got, I've got a big concern with duplication. Again, we're talking creating a whole nother commission, and some of the organizations or commissions that we have now, we can't get, we can't get to numbers to even hold meetings. I've heard three different people speak tonight on, in reference to the homeless situation. Councilman Balls is right, we've been out here in the trenches, so we know it's not going to change. And yes, alcohol and substance abuse is a problem, but it's also mental health issues. You can't make me come in if I don't want to come in out of the rain. So for me, I'm not, I'm voting against this one, only because we have, we have a situation where we have organization who was working, and by looking at this chart that they provided us with, they've got enough things going on, that if we were going to do anything as a council, we would get in, roll our sleeves up, and get busy with this consortium that's already in existence, so for me, my vote is no. Yes.
Yeah, I, I listened to the CEO of United Way today, which I appreciate, actually seeing her for the first time. I knew Cheryl, I worked with Cheryl for over twenty years, and this is my first time meeting you and seeing you, listening to Mr. Brown, Executive Director for the Homeless Shelter for Men, Wells Brown, just listening to him saying, aligning, alignment to existing systems. He was saying, why reinvent the wheel, why fix what's not broken? What they're doing is not broken, they need help, let's help them. That's what they were saying. I listened to the young lady, Jasmine, with Saginaw County Protection Council, President and CEO, she literally said, we're unintentionally going to recreate this, we would create competition for funding, why would we create another problem? We need to work together to enhance, these are her words, and listening to the bishop. He has a forty-five thousand square foot church that he's using for the homeless. You know, we have the resources, we have what we need in Saginaw, let's use that to enhance what we already have. We have the mindset, we have our awesome city council here that can use what we have to enhance what they have. Let's work together as a team, as a city, to make Saginaw better. This will only benefit Saginaw as a whole if we work together. Just like you said, Councilman Hammond, you said something powerful, that money is going to go away, we're going to have to work together eventually, we're going to have to. What we're going to have to do is some way, somehow, somebody's going to work together. So we might as well start now.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Two questions. This commission, if voted for, one, would this commission be getting funding? I don't, can somebody answer that?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, there is language in the ordinance that was proposed, that this commission could make recommendations to council and staff to apply for grants for the benefit of the unhoused.
Of this commission?
Correct.
Okay. And two, would this commission be in collaboration with the existing, you know, I've been to the meetings, I'm sorry, with the Saginaw County Consortium? Would that be collaborative effort?
I didn't write the proposal, we're going to refer to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. To the point about receiving funding, the commission would not, I don't, I don't think there would be a mechanism, at least it's not spelled out in the ordinance, for the commission to hold any funding, to have any funding itself, but it would be in place for situations like with Bay City, where the city was able to help as a partner, write MOUs, investigate grants as a body, issue recommendations to the council, to then write another memorandum of understanding, or a, letters of support is what I'm thinking of, to help bolster proposals, to, you know, direct funding for what the whole commission agrees on, could be a project that otherwise might not be able to be funded because it doesn't have a local government partner. So those are opportunities that other communities have taken elsewhere, also to be able to create alignment on policy. And to another point that was made, Councilman Balls specifically said about, and about membership and about people coming forward and saying, well, we should, you know, it should come from the people wanting to do the work. This did come from the people wanting to do the work. I will say, I had outreach of about thirty to thirty-five people, individuals, tell me, I want to be a part of whatever you're doing at the city to address homelessness, because they see it as a problem that the city needs to take responsibility for as its own entity, as our own city staff members are interacting with folks on the street, as all of our entities and our partners are working, and sometimes the city unfortunately has worked in some circumstances to not follow best practices when dealing with homeless individuals, and have caused problems for some of our area nonprofits, to make sure that doesn't happen, make sure we're keeping ourselves, making sure that our policies are in alignment with our mission and values, and the mission and values of these external entities. And also, what the ordinance does have is specific positions laid out for nonprofit employees or leaders in the area who work to address homelessness. So I don't think it's proper to identify a specific nonprofit and set aside something for like a named entity, I don't think you're, that's, I think that's frowned upon, but it is absolutely in the language to work with those entities. And I have had organizations that are members of SC Chap reach out and want to be a part of this commission as well, separately. So I think the last thing that I wanted to mention about this was, this again is, is we all see the issue growing every day, and I think that if in six months, we believe that this commission, if we vote on it today, we enact it today, we say six months from now, hasn't done anything, duplication, waste of time, close it up, I would be absolutely open to being the one to say, all right, we'll remove the ordinance, no more commission, it's done. I think a six-month trial one would be more than fair, that's enough time to do some policy recommendations, issue some reports, say we think this is a viable opportunity, see if we even have enough people to come out to fill a quorum, or not. So I'm willing to put that out there and say that for today.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yep, so, and that's my thing too, it's like thirteen people on the commission, and I noticed some of them are, the positions are actually folks that are part of SC Chap now, and it says member agencies, and I see the city of Saginaw is one of the members, so I'm wondering, what do we do currently as a member of this organization?
There's one member that says that.
Okay.
They have one city employee that's on that.
And also too, the gentleman that was here from the Well, thank you for coming, Christopher, I've actually made donations to the Well before too, it's a great organization here in the city. Yes, Yolanda's staff.
Yolanda going to answer your question.
Hello.
Okay, good evening. Yes, Community Development Block Grant, through LaTicia Trevino, has a position on the board. And so because of the issues that came up with this, we have been talking about possibly providing to council, depending, or deciding whatever way you go, report quarterly as to what they're doing on C Chap and how we can be impactful that way. So we do have membership on the consortium.
Yeah, and I think that, Yolanda, thank you for that, I think that would be helpful regardless, because communication's always good, but even like looking at some of their funding sources here, permanent supportive housing, I mean, they're getting close to a million dollars for that. I mean, they're doing a lot of the work and with everybody that's involved, and I like the fact that they have offered us to come sit at the table. And that was the second time that I've heard that, so I would say, please make that happen for us. And that way, that collaboration folds and you finally lock the door, and we're there at the table, and we're not duplicating something.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about that too, that we've been offered to sit at the table, and I have been invited, and I will be attending a couple of them coming up from SC Chap, so I appreciate that. So that if we say we want to do the work, then we need to be sitting at these tables, besides just talking about it and not doing nothing about it.
And like I said, that, you know, we're willing to provide quarterly reports to council, so that, I mean, we understand that this is an issue, and we understand that funding is limited, as everybody knows what's going on, so we're willing to do that and present to you quarterly.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I've been to several meetings over several years. I don't know why I'm not a member, but I've been to several meetings, because I want to be a, no, be, see what's going on. But anyway, I guess maybe if the language were to change to the, as Councilwoman Hammond said, six months, nothing happened, you know, I'm willing to, you know, you change it to the six months, you know, that if nothing happens, or, you know, squash it, I'm willing to vote for that.
The problem I got with a six-month stay is that, are you all in or you're all out? During the six-month update-
I'm just saying.
It's not going, no, 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 I'm not, this is, I'm owning it, I'm saying it. When we talk about organizations and setting up, and setting up stuff, and I hear six months, I hear us going in wanting to fail. Anything I believe in, I go for a portion. Again, I will not be voting for that, because I think it's mechanisms in place, the city is already involved in this, we have funds that we can probably access, there's agencies that have their own separate funds, duplication of process, we don't have, if we, if we develop the group, first of all, thirteen is too many. We got groups, it's got nine, it's nine of us, and thank God we all come to meetings, but there are so many meetings or groups that don't have, they can't even have meetings because they can't get a quorum. So for me, it's not broke, I don't want to fix it, I will, I will get in where I fit in, and I think that any council member up here, we've been invited to come, if you're really, really concerned, don't talk about it, be about it. That means show up, that means get your sleeve, roll your sleeves up, and get busy. C Chap has told us everything that they do, and I mean, when I look at this board, it's well represented to me. So for me, my answer is no. Yes, Councilman Balls?
Thank you. I would suggest that if you've got thirty people that's interested in helping, and those thirty people shouldn't be trying to join those organizations to see how they can help, you know, if they can't help, then I would maybe suggest they can form something like that, but I say they need to join those organizations and see how they can help from inside, instead of talking about what's happening on the outside. You know, and that's how I would think it'd be best, best way to infiltrate the issue that's happening, you know, you want to help out the homeless, join those organizations. And you know what? I got, I would like to call for the question, man.
Thank you.
Councilman Balls, it's been moved, did I get a second?
Yes, second.
Right, Ms. Chris?
Now take your vote. I'm going to the question.
Now we take a vote to call for the session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Roll call vote. I heard one name.
Oh, call for the question.
Call for the question, yes or no?
Yeah.
Now take your vote on the ordinance introduction.
Now, we're going to vote on the ordinance. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Let's go back.
It's on the ordinance intro now.
Okay.
No.
No.
Councilmember Seales?
Councilmember Seals?
No.
No. Councilmember Balls?
No.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember Ostache?
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Nay.
You have two yes and seven no. That motion is denied. Onto the second ordinance, it's to amend the official city map to vacate that part of Thompson Street as platted between East Genesee Avenue and South Fourth Street.
I need a motion to introduce.
Removed.
Second.
It's been moved as support. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This ordinance will be laid over per our charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Onto resolutions, our first is to adopt the mission statement, vision statement, and core values.
I need a motion to adopt.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is authorizing the supplemental issuance of water supply system junior lien revenue bonds, series 2025.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
All those, any, I'm sorry, any questions? All those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our final resolution is authorizing the issuance of sewage disposal system junior lien revenue bonds, series 2025.
I need a motion to adopt.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Onto miscellaneous business.
Do we have anything that we'd like to discuss? Yes.
I would like to request to go on a closed session.
Okay, we can't hear you.
I request then to go on a closed session.
How does that work?
So motion done. Well, first, I mean, is there a second? Second?
Okay.
Okay. So the Open Meetings Act is very specific about purposes for which a closed session can be called. There are very limited reasons that closed session can be called. So I think the question is, why is this motion being made?
Just one second. She looking it up on the phone, right?
Mm, yes, I am. Yeah.
In regards to legal issues. It's in regards to a legal, to explain a legal issue. I'm not looking, I can't, uh, pull up the actual.
That's not an allowed purpose under the Open Meetings Act.
Yes, it is. And I've read it.
Could you please give me the statutory citation for that? It's MCL 15.268. Which subsection are you referring to?
I'll say nobody heard anything that y'all saying, because I know I did. Did y'all hear down there?
I heard.
That's because you down.
Madam City Attorney, would the reasoning of personnel matters apply?
I, again, I don't have enough information to know what this legal issue is that wants to be discussed.
It, it's my, it's my personal legal issue that I like to discuss with my, uh, city council members.
Well, discussing matters that are personal to you as an individual is not an allowed purpose to go into closed session under the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, yes, it is, but I'm good. And, and I did try. Yes, it is. And, and for some reason I can't pull it up, but I'm, I'm, I did try. And yes, it is. And I don't agree with your opinion, yet, and I know I can go into a closed meeting.
Yes, Councilman Balls.
It seem like the clerk should be helping us out with this.
I defer to the city attorney on this.
Well, the city attorney is incorrect. I know for, I know for a fact she's incorrect. And, and I will bring it up next time. But I, I wanted to address the city council.
Well, there's some questions down here. I'm sorry, I still want to end it to take you to lunch.
Definitely incorrect.
I don't know if there's even a motion on the floor, so I don't know what we're discussing. I don't think there's a motion on the floor, so I don't know.
There's a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Okay, so we're discussing.
But the record needs to be clear on what we're going, what the basis for going into.
I guess that's a legal matter.
That's not. The, the statute is very specific. You can go in to discuss settlement negotiations. You can go in to discuss collective bargaining matters. You can go in to discuss disciplinary matters. You can go in to discuss written legal opinions, but.
You, you, I, I, I stand on what I said. You are incorrect, but that's all right. And I will, uh, send you the information because for some reason it's not, it's not, uh, coming up. But, but I'm good. Thank you.
So what are we doing?
I resigned enough.
She's withdrawn, withdrawn it for now.
She can't withdraw. There's a second.
I didn't hear you.
The motion belongs to the body now because there's.
The motion belongs to the body. Up or down? All those, the motion was, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, can you?
What I have is to request to go into closed session to discuss personal legal matters with city council.
So now we're calling for the vote. All those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Seals?
Nay.
Councilmember Walls?
Nay.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember Ostache?
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock?
Nay.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
And Mayor Moore?
Nay.
You have one yes and eight no. That motion is denied. You are still under miscellaneous business.
It's a, it's a motion on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor, see if I'm about to say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.